Good evening. It is May fifteenth and it's time for the Board of Alderman meeting. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to this flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Shirley, have we had a roll taken?
Roll has been taken. Everybody is present except for the mayor, and you do have a call.
Very good. Okay, first off, under personal appearances, we have two tonight. The first one is actually to honor the World Elder Abuse Awareness Day proclamation. And we're going to give that to Marie Steiner. Marie, if you don't know, she does a lot for our seniors here in town. She's a great advocate for them. She's a great advocate for our city. And it's quite an honor to be able to have her represent our seniors. If you'd like to read the proclamation, please.
A proclamation recognizing June fifteenth, twenty twenty-three, as World Elder Abuse Awareness Day in Kearney, Missouri. Whereas, older adults deserve to be treated with respect and dignity to enable them to serve as leaders, mentors, volunteers, and vital participating members of our communities. And whereas, in two thousand and six, the International Network for Prevention of Elder Abuse in support of the United Nations International Plan of Action proclaimed a day to recognize the significance of elder abuse as a public health and human rights issue. And whereas, the National Center on Elder Abuse and the Clay County Senior Services Board recognized the importance of taking action to raise awareness, prevent, and address elder abuse. And whereas, ageism and social isolation are major causes of elder abuse in the United States. And whereas, proper social structures help retain community and societal connections, reducing the likelihood of abuse. And whereas, preventing the abuse of older adults through maintaining and improving social supports, like senior centers, human services, and transportation, allows older adults to continue to live as independently as possible and contribute to the life and vibrancy of our communities. And now, therefore, I, Randy Pogue, Mayor, do hereby proclaim June fifteenth, twenty twenty-three, as World Elder Abuse Awareness Day in the city of Kearney, Missouri. And I encourage all of our citizens to recognize and celebrate older adults and their ongoing contributions to the success and vitality of our country. And witness whereof, I have here and to set my hand and cause to be affixed the seal of Kearney, Missouri, this fifteenth day of May, twenty twenty-three.
Please do.
Can you hear me?
I can.
Okay. World Elder Abuse Awareness Day is recognized in June. Here are six types of elder abuse. Physical abuse, emotional or psychological abuse, sexual abuse, neglect or abandonment from the caregiver, financial exploitation, healthcare fraud and abuse. These are the seven signs to watch for. Lack of basic amenities. Cluttered, filthy living environment. Unexplained sexually transmitted disease. Unpaid bills, new credit cards, and a reduced cash withdrawals. Harassment, intimidation, humiliation. Caregiver isolates elder. If you suspect elder abuse, call one eight hundred eight five abuse. Twenty-four, seven, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. My personal opinion, every day should be Elder Abuse Awareness Day. The color purple, this is the only thing I had that was purple, is to raise the awareness of elder abuse. Thank you. And I do have, so everybody will remember this. Your names are on here, so if you'll go through there and pick out yours.
Very cool.
Pass on the others. And I'd love to do some extras for anyone else that would like one. If you'd like to pass it around.
You have one coming.
Thank you, Marie.
Now I'm ready.
I am a Jerry.
Yours are close.
Yes.
I thought ahead.
Is that on?
That's to man, please.
The next personal appearance will be brought to us by Brock Winklebauer. He would like to talk to us on behalf of chickens. And he and his son have came to bring a presentation. Just for the public's record, there will be no action taken on this tonight. This will be an informative invitation to talk about chickens. And then, we can, at a later date, work on ordinances if we need to. If that's the Board's desire to move forward. So at this time, the floor is yours. Please state your name and address for the record.
Brock Winklebauer, seventeen twenty-five Harbor Drive. Good evening, Board, and thank you for giving me and my son Bryce an opportunity to speak with you this evening. I want to discuss the chicken ordinance within the city limits. I know this topic has been brought up at various meetings throughout the past few years. But more recently, it was discussed at an Alderman meeting, I believe, on March twenty-first of twenty twenty-two. The Board at that time had positive comments for it, but it was noted that an animal control officer should be on staff to help with any enforcement as needed. But now that the city of Kearney does have an animal control officer, what are the next steps? I'm not here to debate any facts or opinions about chickens. As a good neighbor and a steward of my land, I would want to conclude a chicken coop appearance from the road as much as possible. As noted in the same March twenty-first meeting, a reasonable property line distance requirement should be considered.
I know from experience helping my cousin over the last year, it has taught me how to care for chickens. They make great backyard pets and are great learning opportunities for all kids. They can also provide nutrients for gardens and help the local economy when buying or selling chicken merchandise.
So I end with this. If the city is already aware that chickens, that citizens in town do have chickens, and it is allowed unless there is a noise complaint, then why not just allow people to have chickens? Why should people have to ask their neighbors for permission in exchange for eggs throughout the year? As you know, there are other surrounding cities such as Liberty, Smithville, Kansas City, and Lawson, just to name a few, who have already made this change. I believe it's time that Kearney does the same.
Thank you again for all your time, and I hope you take this into consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Winklebauer. Thank you, young man. You did a good job. Okay, let's move forward with the consent agenda. Do you have a chance to read the consent agenda? Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Still moved.
Can I get a second?
Well, second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Hearing none? Consent agenda passes. Let's move on to ordinances. I'm going to turn that over to you.
Okay, the first ordinance has to do with a grant application, and Donnie Smith can talk about it.
DNR put out a grant application to assist with the lead copper rule inventory. Not sure we'll qualify, but if we don't try, we won't. So they do have a loan and grant applicant, but we're actually just looking at the grant portion. So if we can get some assistance, I mean, we've already spent a little over thirteen thousand dollars on the inventory and probably another twelve or so next year. If we can get some assistance, that'd be great.
Donnie, how much we think we might be able to get out of that?
They're holding their cards close to their hand. They're not giving us an amount. It's probably per resident, per citizen type. We're going to do a percentage on the population, that'd be my guess.
I'd like to read the ordinance.
An ordinance of the city of Kearney, Missouri, authorizing the city administrator to submit a grant application to the Missouri Department of Natural Resources State Revolving Fund Program for loans and/or grants under the Missouri Clean Water Law.
I'm so moved.
Second.
Does that need a second reading? Or actually, we need to take a vote?
Yeah.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Hearing none? Passes.
A motion for a second reading.
Motion for a second reading? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Second? You got a second?
No.
First, second?
An ordinance of the city of Kearney, Missouri, authorizing the city administrator to submit a grant application to the Missouri Department of Natural Resources State Revolving Fund Program for loans and/or grants under the Missouri Clean Water Law.
Would you approve on second reading?
Yeah, that's good. First, second?
Elderwoman Barker?
Aye.
Alderman Lehman?
Aye.
Elderwoman Spencer?
Aye.
Alderman Holt?
Aye.
That motion passes.
Motion passes. Move to ordinance number two. For B.
This is an agreement with MoDOT for the flock camera system, and Chief O'Leary, if you wouldn't mind just telling them a little bit about it.
We're currently moving forward with the installation of the flock cameras. In order to do so, we had to get permission through MoDOT to install a few of the cameras on their existing poles that are owned by MoDOT and within the MoDOT easements. They've been gracious enough to give us the permission, and now they're just kind of setting the ground rules. The agreement kind of spells out how we have to mount the cameras. The fact that the cameras are our financial responsibility, not MoDOT's. So I need to have the signed agreement to move forward with the installation.
Can you choose to read the ordinance?
An ordinance authorizing the chief of police to sign and submit an application agreement to the Missouri Department of Transportation, MoDOT, Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission, giving the city of Kearney, Missouri permission to install and maintain the flock camera system on commission right-of-way within the city's jurisdictional limits per the conditions of the document.
Would you approve on the first reading?
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Hearing none? Please read it a second time.
An ordinance authorizing the chief of police to sign and submit an application agreement to the Missouri Department of Transportation, MoDOT, Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission, giving the city of Kearney, Missouri permission to install and maintain the flock camera system on commission right-of-way within the city's jurisdictional limits per the conditions of the document. Motion to approve.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Please pull aboard.
Alderman Lehman?
Aye.
Elderwoman Spencer?
Aye.
Alderman Holt?
Aye.
Elderwoman Barker?
Aye.
Passes.
And the next one?
The next item is an ordinance that is reappropriating and revising the fiscal year twenty twenty-four adopted city budget. And this is to, now that the year has ended, or the new year has begun, actually, we actually know what the fund balance of each fund is and what the cash carryover is to begin the year. We also know what kinds of items did not get paid, were committed and approved in last year's budget. We actually had ordered or made arrangements to purchase those items, but they didn't actually get paid before the end of the year. So those items are being re-appropriated from last year. And then, there are a couple of items that were not at all contemplated in last year's budget that we're adding in. So one of those items is replacing a patrol vehicle that was totaled in March after the adoption of the fiscal year budget. Also, we, in addition, a new item is, as a result of positions that we added in the fiscal year twenty twenty-four budget, we need some workspaces added, and so that is contemplated. And then, we found out that the flags that are placed on the light poles to celebrate patriotic holidays such as Memorial Day, Fourth of July, those flags are in very bad shape. And we are asking to use some of the cash carryover money from the general fund to replace those so that we can proudly display those flags in the community. And then, the other item that isn't every appropriation is the Supreme Court, the Missouri Supreme Court, requires that our prosecuting attorney budget not be included in the municipal court budget, which is where it's housed, and we're going to move that to the city hall budget. And that is really an effort that the court is wanting to do to show separation of the legal system and implementing justice away from the people who are doing the administration and enforcing the laws, if that makes sense. And so they're going through, taking a lot of appropriate steps to try to make sure that it's very clear that people do have a fair trial and that it's, not everything is connected, if that makes sense.
Before reading the ordinance, I would like to ask the Board if you have any questions.
Do we have any numbers on any of these?
Yeah.
What do all of these total up to?
So...
There's quite a few.
So, there are, and they're listed out separately. So, the, in section two, well, first, section one is taking the cash carryover, the fund balance, that was either more than or less than, and you can see that in that table for each fund. So on page nineteen of your agenda packet.
Yeah.
And then you can see, for example, general fund. We had, the cash carryover to begin the year was three hundred thousand, three hundred and seventy-four dollars more than we had anticipated. By the time we reappropriate things that we had anticipated being paid in last year and aren't getting to, and take out the replacement of the new patrol vehicle, and the flags, and the office space, it ends up, that three hundred thousand dollars ends up being ninety-one thousand, eight hundred and seventy-four dollars. That gets added to reserves, if that makes sense.
So we're looking at a total figure for all of these items of what, then?
Well, there, I didn't add them all up. Like, I have them, I have them...
Just one. What's the additional workspace?
So the additional workspaces, there's five additional workspaces. And electrical and additional storage needs. And that is estimated, and I think it's a high estimation, but I wouldn't want to come back and tell you that it was going to be more. It's eighty-five thousand dollars. Okay. And that's on section five. And then you can see the patrol vehicle is in section two. That's also coming out of the general fund. That's a hundred and five thousand dollars. But not only is it the, replacing the patrol vehicle, but it's also re-appropriating the equipment that was ordered in last year's budget but hadn't arrived yet because we still are dealing with some supply chain, and we're carrying that over. And then, on section six, the flags and poles are ten thousand dollars. And sections two through section seven are all dealing with the general fund. Section seven is that transfer, moving the municipal, or the funds for the prosecuting attorney out of the municipal court into city hall. And then, section eight, that is just re-appropriating funds that we had planned on spending on that pickleball court last fiscal year into this year because we still need to spend that money to finish that project. Just didn't get spent. So that is a reappropriation. It's nothing new, if that makes sense. Section nine, it's thirty-one thousand dollars from the water and sewer revenue fund. We had to repair a pump at the east lift station, and we ordered that, but it didn't actually get installed because we were waiting.
I understand all the reappropriation. That's not what I was questioning.
Oh.
Okay.
Okay, did we go over what you were, what you were asking about? Yes. Okay, perfect. Yeah.
Kathy, any questions?
No.
Okay.
David?
Good.
Please read the ordinance.
An ordinance approving the reappropriation and revision of the city of Kearney, Missouri fiscal year twenty twenty-four adopted city budget to true-up beginning fund balance amounts. Reappropriate amounts committed in the prior fiscal year but not paid prior to the end of fiscal year twenty twenty-three. Appropriate additional funds and transfer the prosecuting attorney appropriation from the municipal court to city hall.
Would you approve on the first reading?
I'll second.
Any first and second? Everyone approves, say yea.
Yeah.
You want to oppose? You're done? Second, I'll read it a second time, please.
An ordinance approving the reappropriation and revision of the city of Kearney, Missouri fiscal year twenty twenty-four adopted city budget to true-up beginning fund balance amounts. Reappropriate amounts committed in the prior fiscal year but not paid prior to the end of fiscal year twenty twenty-three. Appropriate additional funds and transfer the prosecuting attorney appropriation from the municipal court to city hall.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none? Please pull aboard.
Elderwoman Spencer?
Aye.
Alderman Holt?
Aye.
Elderwoman Barker?
Aye.
Alderman Lehman?
Aye.
That passes.
Very good. Kathy, would you like to give us a financial report?
Yes. So, as I mentioned last time, we're going to start giving monthly financial reports to the Board and to the citizens. And the last time I spoke, it was for the twelve months ended March thirty-first, and this is the report for the first month of the year, April. Now, one thing to note, this is an estimate. The reason being is that we want to be able to present this as a second meeting each month. This is an early meeting for accountants to have it all done and make the board agenda by the fifteenth of the month. So these numbers are estimated in here. But there shouldn't be any significant differences, you know, from what you're seeing. The one thing I do want to point out, if you notice on the first page of the proprietary funds, there's a fund called Fund Twenty, the Water and Sewer Revenue Fund. Now, that's a fund that we're going to discontinue using, and we're going to start breaking out water and sewer into each two separate funds. And so there's a scheduled transfer of one point one four four million dollars that happened. Now, that was budgeted, and we went ahead and transferred all the money at the beginning of the year. And you go to, what I believe is the one, two, three, fourth page, you'll see Funds Twenty-four and Twenty-five, Water Capital and Sewer Capital. And that's where that money went. So five hundred thousand dollars to one, and six hundred thousand dollars to the other. And it's just a significant number in there, and I wanted to be able to point that out to you, that you knew what it was specifically. And we'll continue to see these each month. And if you have questions or if there's information you're looking for, please reach out to me.
Kathy, we're doing away with Fund Twenty, but doesn't that also get split up between Fund Thirty-three and Thirty-five?
Yes, yeah, there's going to be, so the, instead of it all being in one fund, it's breaking out into two different funds that are going to be kind of the administration of it, Thirty-three and Thirty-five. And Twenty-four and Twenty-five are the capital improvement projects. So it's getting broken up into other little funds, if that makes any sense.
Kathy, but that adds up to more than the one point one one four.
The revenues, may I?
Yes, please.
Sorry. The revenues that are showing in Fund Thirty-three and Thirty-five, those are actual receipts from utility bills for the month of April. So, yes.
Okay.
The transfer, those funds were planned on being transferred to, the funds in Fund Twenty were going to be transferred to those capital project funds to pay for the master plans.
Okay, that makes sense. Anything else with your report?
That's all. Thanks.
Thank you. Oh, go ahead.
Kathy, on Fund Twenty-eight, I noticed there's four million dollar expenditure and only twenty-three thousand in revenue. What was that? Do we know?
That's a good question. I don't have an answer for you at this moment, but I can look that up and see.
It is, if you don't mind.
Please, go ahead.
And that is for the highway construction and the roundabout construction. So we, the money that is coming into that is actually the interest from the bond proceeds that are invested, and we are spending the bond proceeds. So anytime there's a capital project fund, we're not necessarily going to be getting operating revenues. The money's already in there, been transferred, and so we are just expending the projects, if that makes sense. So when you see that it's under the capital project fund section, try to keep that in mind, and if you forget, I'll be happy to remind you. And Kathy will, too.
Thank you.
Well, is this also where we got the road district money? That's not going to be in here, all right? Because that's all the road districts?
The road district money actually goes into the, into Fund Eighteen, the transportation sales tax fund, with a lot of other different, of the other revenues.
Okay, I didn't know if they had their own line item.
I only, I only know this, you guys, because I got so close and intimate with that budget this year, and so Kathy didn't get to enjoy that experience with me. She's, she's going to get intimate with it soon.
We'll keep picking your brain.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Any other questions on the monthly budget report? Mayor's Communications. Well, the mayor's not here tonight, so I'm in his place. I really don't have much to bring, other than the fact that we get graduations and things coming up. And so I'd just ask that everybody be very aware of, a lot of people from out of town will be here for graduations, different parties and things like that. It's always great to have this time of year, but it's also a very economic time, too. So make sure that when you see people that are out of town, greet them, let them know that we're a small town that's friendly and their family live here for a reason, and maybe they want to come and live here, too. So make sure and keep that in mind as we get ready to go into graduation time. That's all I have for city administrations report.
Sure. The next regular board meeting will be Monday, June fifth, at six thirty PM. The Spirit Committee Community Meeting will be held at the Holiday Inn Express on Thursday, May twenty-fifth, beginning at six thirty PM. I'm sure that they would love for you guys to participate, if you can. There is, when the mayor gets back in town, there's going to be a special closed session, which is being planned at this time for May twenty-third at six thirty PM. That is what the idea is. And then, I wanted to remind those of you that are registered, the city official training is going to be on Friday, May nineteenth, at the Holiday Inn Express. And then, Donnie has a couple of things.
Yep, I'm going to binge here. I've got six items here. So I'll get through them quick, I promise. We had our DNR inspection at the water plant. We asked for flying colors. We had a few dings, and we were very, before she ever left, and she was really appreciative of that. She spoke accolades of Mr. Putnam, our chief operator. His record-keeping is excellent. She said Shirley's on the backwater records, or she pulled three or four and said she couldn't believe how complete and organized they were, so. So those two people, thank you very much. Lamper Anderson is going to be doing some smoke testing in the second and third street area the week of five twenty-nine. We haven't got a hard day yet, but it will be within that week. So if you hear anything about smoke in houses or stuff like that, that'll be why, because of floor drains that are not full or leaking pipes inside their buildings. And this is in an attempt to find cross-connections between sewer and stormwater. So, um, Phillips Paving is kicking off this week. They've already kind of started laying out curbs and, and they'll be moving in on the cut and patch probably tomorrow or the next day. So then you'll be hearing road repair and possible traffic issues. And we're trying to let everybody know as much as possible that that's going to be going on. I've already contacted the bus bar and said that they might have some conflicts. And if they have trouble, ask to give me a call, so hopefully squash that. Stamtech was supposed to be here this week. They've pushed us off another week. That is the, um, pavement evaluation company. So hopefully they'll get rolling here in the next week or so. And I put a ordinance on parking in front of you. And it, and it kind of really dials down to Dan and David's award on, this is ordinances. I was kind of looking through the, um, parking ordinances because we've had a couple of questions. And it was brought to my attention that some of these were really not doing. And I'm not sure how the board does. Wanted to put it in front of you and see that if that's something we want to pursue or change. Not looking for an action today, I just want you to look at it and gather an opinion. And then I'll probably be bringing it to you later to, um, either leave it installed and enforce it or change it. So, um, just wanted to bring it to everybody's attention so that it can be looked at. If there is no decision, the way I read it, the ordinance says that we need to install the signs because it is an ordinance that is imposed, so.
So there are not currently signs in place for the, for these?
Not in these areas. They're not, they're kind of scattered. They're not like they should be.
Okay.
So if I was to do it, we'll bring them up to code and, and put them like they should be. And I don't know if they've been knocked down or taken out or, and not replaced. I'm not sure what the history is. But since I've actually dug into this and found it, I'm bound to follow the ordinance unless it's changed.
Well, the two-hour limit on angle parking between Grove and Jefferson on Washington Street, would that be all day, twenty-four-seven? Or would that be business hours for our businesses? So a nine-to-five type thing?
This is kind of the reason I'm, I've kind of dug into it and brought it before the board because it's very gray and not clear. So I would love to change it so it is very clear and ungray. Unmuddy the waters, if you will. So if we can look at it, I would be happy to.
With two restaurants and sometimes you have a bigger group and you might be two and a half hours at one of the restaurants.
Well, you see, rent out her thing for.
Yeah.
You may be three, four hours if that's a wedding reception or something like that there.
I would welcome any input. And that's why we're bringing it before the board, so that we can bring it up to the day.
Yeah, that needs to change.
If you see that there's a change that you would like to, uh, consider, maybe just send me an email and so we can propose that for a future ordinance change.
Yeah. Thanks for bringing it up, Donna.
And I think that's all I have, so that was fairly pointless, I think.
David? You want to?
Oh, you want me to address that, yeah. Alderman Lehman asked a question last time about pools and release of pool water. That's interesting. We've made contact with Sarah Wright, who's Land District MS4 permitting coordinator for DNR. And she's responded back to us. And I'd like to just read part of her message back to us. She says, "If residents let cool water sit for seventy-two hours, adding nothing, chlorine will most likely dissipate out. Discharging water across vegetated yards is also a great practice. By the time any of that reaches the storm system, keep it set for days. And then through the yard, it's very reasonable that the chlorine is out." And that's kind of a concern, is releasing water that then gets into the, or streams that's been chlorinated and full of chemicals. So that was their response, and that comes from DNR, uh, the MS4, the stormwater person.
And then the last thing that I have is I just want to introduce Carolyn tonight. She's our new economic film director, and we are so excited that she's here.
Welcome aboard, welcome aboard. All right, let's open up to Alderman discussion. Jerry, you got anything?
I don't. Thank you, though.
You don't? Good for you. Kathy?
I just want to add my congratulations to all the graduates and good luck and best wishes for, for a great future.
Yeah. David, what you got?
So, few things. Donnie talked about the smoke test. Have we sent out any kind of letters or anything, let them know?
I've got a letter set up to send out. It's two to seven days prior to, and I'm trying to, I emailed them today, trying to force them to give me a hard date so that we can get them done. Because I said I have to have time.
Yeah.
To get them placed.
So otherwise, fire department's going to get all kinds of phone calls.
You're starting down here in the old park town, double two?
It'll be in the second and third street, kind of.
Oh, second, third, over by the park?
Yeah.
Okay.
It actually is the corridor from basically Clark Street up to Grove Street from like Third Street, Second and Fourth Street, right through there.
Do we also publish that on the website, things like that, so people?
We'll put something on Facebook and we can add a post, a news post to the website.
Okay.
Pretty good idea. David, I noticed in, in talking to our city administrator that one of the things that was mentioned in that was, in the release of pool water was a pH of five point five to eleven point five. That's a huge.
Eleven point five sounds pretty.
That's a huge range. And having a pool myself, if I've got a pH of five point five, I've got algae. And, and so when we start to look at this, I think we really need to look at it close because that's, that's a huge range for pH. That goes all the way from algae to etching of, of pool liners and, and very harmful pH, so. So I think that's something that, you know, it's, um, I've tested my pool water coming out of backwashing my pump. And the, the residual chlorine in my water won't even test. So, uh, without waiting seventy-two hours, so. So, uh, we need to, we need to take a look at that. Last, but certainly not least, this Saturday, we had a very busy, uh, parking lot in front of this school, the old school administration building. Now, the, the early childhood development, we had farmer's market in the morning. And about the time it disbanded, the second Saturday's set up. And man, I'll tell you what, there was a bunch of people up there. We had food trucks up there, we had, um, you name it. And, uh, we had a lot of people from out of town. My wife and I went up there to, to look at stuff. And, and, uh, they had, they had a couple that was not from Carney. They were actually here for the second Saturdays. And said that it's just absolutely wonderful of them. So, you know, anytime we can get people from outside of town, into town, to show off our town, that's, that's a great opportunity, so.
I agree. There wasn't a lot of people there.
Yeah, lots of people. That's all I got.
All right. Well, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Somewhere.
Take a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.